Just a heads up to everybody, we're going live online now.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hi, how are you?
Doing just fine, sir. How are you?
Couldn't be better.
A pleasure to see you this evening.
Minus two. Likewise.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the Village of Los Rancho, Albuquerque Board of Trustees Regular Meeting. The time is 7:00 PM. To remain in compliance with the State of New Mexico's amended public health order dated November the 5th, 2020, the Village of Los Rancho, Albuquerque, this meeting is held through Zoom video conferencing and is live streaming on its website and Facebook page. And also participants have the ability to join telephonically. The instructions on how to participate in this meeting have been posted on the Village website. At this time, I will call the role trustee Rael. Are you unmuted trustee Rael?
Here.
Thank you. Trustee Lewis is excused. Trustee Pacheco.
I think.
Trustee Ricabini.
Present.
Thank you. At this time, I will move to item three, approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Trustee Rael.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna call for the question. I'm gonna call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rael.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
At this time, I'm gonna move to the public comment period. Participants may address the Board of Trustees to comment on issues, problems, or successes on topics that do not appear elsewhere on the agenda. Submitted written comments that were sent to the clerk prior to the meeting will now be read. Danielle, please read the written comments that you received.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm reading this letter on behalf of Laura Lee McDowell. Good evening. A few days ago, the holiday issue of the Village Vision arrived at our house. Very nice cover. I sat down to take a look. As I reached page five, I stopped. A full page ad for a new business jumped out at me. And as I read it, I saw a small quote from the business owner saying that she was so excited to be a part of the Village of Los Rancho's community. And just above the quote was the address Albuquerque, New Mexico. Really? After all the talk of how carefully the magazine is being proofread? And whoever did the proofing let this through? Or has this business lady never been told how important it is to use the proper address? Or is it no longer considered important to use the correct address for our village? When Larry Abraham was elected mayor in 2004, one of the very first things he did was to assign one of the staff to go through all recent real estate records and determine where the fees and costs of the real estate transactions actually were paid. Most had been paid to the city of Albuquerque. He recovered approximately a quarter of a million dollars for the village from that project. Larry then designed the small yellow sign that was required to hang from each real estate sign to alert both agents and buyer where that property was located. The agents hated it, but it worked. Larry and many others then went on a serious campaign to make sure everyone in our village used the proper address. Businesses didn't like it because they had to change their stationery and ads. Residents hated it for the same reason and because they didn't feel others would be able to find them. But eventually it worked and the village is on all the maps and has become well-known. And now this, has no one on our staff made it clear to this business woman what her correct address is? If not, is it possible that she has had her business stationery printed incorrectly? And if so, she should be furious. Would it not be possible to require all our staff in the process of preparing business licenses to impress upon the owner what the correct address is? And you might be interested to know that John McDowell regularly makes it his business to check each village businesses cash register receipts to see what address it shows. You'd be amazed, excuse me, you'd be amazed at how many show Albuquerque and not Los Rancho's. So are these gross receipts going to Albuquerque? It is our observation that this village needs every penny we are owed in these tough times. Our tax amounts are different from Albuquerque's. Are we getting the proper amount that we are owed? It is the trustee's job to keep an eye on the way the village is run, particularly as regards money. Perhaps some extra supervision on your part might be a good idea. Meanwhile, if the staff member involved with the dreadful mistake in this ad has not apologized to the business owner, she had better do it and perhaps rerun the ad free in the next issue. If it was my business, I'd send a bill to the village for reprinting my stationery. What a terrible way to welcome the businesses we need. And if the magazine staff needs help proofreading, I'm available. I've had a lot of experience. Thank you for listening. Laura Lee McDowell, 7201 Guadalupe Trail, Los Rancho, New Mexico. That's all I have, Mayor, for tonight as far as written comments.
Okay, I appreciate it and we'll certainly look into this. I certainly didn't notice it, but that's neither here nor there. Okay, participants wishing to speak that registered with the clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting will be provided an opportunity to speak within the allotted three-minute time limit. I know that we have a gentleman that wants to speak, so if Kiko can unmute the participant, Mr. Henry Shonard, if he's here.
Mr. Shonard, you have been unable to speak if you can unmute your audio and/or video.
I think I'm unmuted now. Is that true?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Henry Shonard. I live at 6603 Elwood Drive Northwest.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much. Dear Mayor Lopez and Board of Trustees, congratulations on the October signing of the purchase, sale, and development agreement to allow Palandrome to proceed with the new Village Center at Fourth and Osuna. Palandrome has a well-deserved reputation for doing similar projects worth millions of dollars. The new Village Center will be a great benefit to the Village of Los Rancho's. However, I would like to repeat a concern of the neighborhood where I live whose southern boundary lies along the traffic corridor on Osuna between Second and Osuna. Noisy and, I'm sorry, Second and Fourth Street, excuse me, between Second and Fourth. Noisy and speeding cars. I live on Osuna and experience the problem every day. The new Village Center is likely to create more of a problem due to more traffic and less a plan for traffic abatement is part of the plan for the new Village Center. I raised this issue at the July 22nd meeting of the board in a written statement read to you by our clerk Danielle Cedillo Molina, and I do appreciate the chance to repeat our caution. The village administrator, Ann Simon, told me in an email on Monday that it is her understanding that the developer will be analyzing the traffic at the intersection of Fourth and Osuna and said that she will make sure that Palandrome and subcontractors Decker, Perridge, Sabatini, and Sabatini hear my concerns. Ms. Simon was very kind to invite me to address you again tonight about our concern. Thank you for the chance to do so. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor and esteemed board members for working so hard and smart for the Village of Los Rancho's that we all love. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shonard. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak that did not register prior to the meeting?
I am shouting, no hands.
Yes, no hands. Okay, so we can move on. Thank you, Kiko. There are no presentations, which is item five. We now move to the consent agenda. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda. And the consent agenda will be reconsidered separately. 6A is the minutes of October 14, 2020, regular meeting. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, I've got a second. Is there any discussion or correction to those minutes? Being none, I'm gonna call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rael.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
I'm now gonna move to item seven, which is the departmental reports. The departmental reports are included in the packet and reflect activities for the period listed in the individual reports. Does the governing body have any questions for staff or me regarding the reports? If so, we will have each trustee ask all their questions before we move to the next trustee, trustee Rael.
I have one question of Fred.
Fred is on.
Fred, regarding the night out crime prevention on Elwood and Osuna, is there a problem there that you know that they discussed? Or what is, what brought that about?
No, Mayor and trustee Rael, that was part of a national night out campaign that is usually in August, but throughout Bernal County, they did it that later on due to COVID. And they just kind of walked the neighborhood and got to know each other. But that's all it was, just to meet the neighbors and they hope to continue to do that throughout the year.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, trustee Rael?
No, that's it for.
Thank you. Trustee Pacheco.
Good evening. Yes, I do have a few questions. The first one is for Administrator Simon. Under the admin legal bullet points, you talk about a judgment on Tuscosha property for the cleanup. Did the family agree to a payment plan to reimburse the village for the cleanup? How did that work?
Trustee Pacheco, Mayor and trustees, I might have Nan jump in here too. Right now, we are just trying to get a judgment on the costs, the overall costs. And the mechanism for how that is paid back to the village is yet another ruling by the judge. And it's my understanding that what usually happens is we are able to put a lien on the property. So when it's sold, we can reclaim our money. And I guess I'll just defer to Nan to make sure that I'm saying the right thing.
Nan, go ahead.
Mayor, trustee, we have drafted, and I think it's already on file now at the court, a lien and judgment in the amount of the cost to the village. And it will, it'll show as a lien on the property. But you can also bring enforcement action, a foreclosure action, if you will, to collect against the property. So I was just discussing this with my partner. I do know that the lady that owns the home is elderly. And we're trying to make sure that in the event of her passing, the debt is still collected and does not disappear with her passing. So again, a couple of different ways, it'll either, it'll be a lien and we'll show up if the house is sold and we can also bring an enforcement action to collect.
Okay, but there's not been any action put forth from the family to, other than this $2,000 to make any kind of restitution?
Trustee Pacheco and Mayor and others, no.
Okay. Okay. On the beautiful new Green Valley pickleball court. What, and I know there was something in the Village Vision this week about its availability to the residents. Are we going to have some kind of ongoing communication? I'm assuming it's gonna be posted on the website. And I know that word of mouth is really important where this is concerned, but just letting our residents know that this is available to them. What are our plans?
Trustee Pacheco and trustees, I, we do have a notice on our on our facilities page on our website that talks about how one reserves the nets, the paddles, and the balls. And aside from that, we have not had any kind of groundbreaking, if you will, or grand opening because of, you know, lack of the ability to gather. But I, but I would hope that you all would help us spread the word. I know that the US Pickleball Association has asked if they can list those courts on their website. They have people that travel all over the world and are always looking for places to play when they're traveling. And then the entire pickleball community in New Mexico will be aware of them as soon as they post that information.
What a great way to showcase our community.
I agree.
That'd be awesome. And this kind of relates to the area. I know that it was mentioned that if we get rid of some of those buildings that there might be a storage trailer placed on the property. Is, I'm not sure that that's a good thing, especially cleaning it out as we hope to do, to put a storage container there. What is kind of the next action, I guess, with regard to that?
Okay, that's a great question, trustee Pacheco, Mayor and trustees. This was just a request by the Boy Scouts. And I thought it was probably a lot better to have a nice clean trailer or storage unit there behind Old Village Hall than the dilapidated buildings that are there right now. It certainly would be safer for the Boy Scouts to store their equipment in something that was not going to potentially catch fire or leak. And then, of course, security-wise, it's a lot safer. We do have precedent to store equipment on village property. We store all of the equipment for the for the growers market, the signage and and flags and so forth.
Where is that?
That's kept in a trailer, in a storage facility right behind Village Hall.
Potential use for the Boy Scouts as well?
Well, they bought that facility, the growers market, and it's pretty full. There's a lot of equipment that the Boy Scouts own. And they would need their own storage facility and they're amenable to it. But, but right now, we're just weighing where, where, where that, that equipment could be stored. So there's no decisions made, but if you're opposed to putting it there, we will definitely note that.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to commend Fergus Sabrina, the egg committee, for doing such a great job with their partnerships and collaborations with the community members, the community at large, and, you know, bringing in all the experts to work on the village initiatives. I just wanted to say thank you to them on that. Let's see, this is for Director Justice. You indicate that, you know, that the short-term rental policy is being put together. And I know I did see the write-up in the Village Vision. So what is our timeframe now? So once, when are we gonna get all the input? And then what is the timeframe for getting the policy drafted?
Trustee Pacheco, Mayor trustees, it's a great question. A lot of it will actually depend on the response that we get from the public from the Village Vision magazine article. If they agree with our recommendations, we can move forward with them pretty quickly. We're already in talks with a company who would help with code enforcement, at least for the first year initially, so that we can make sure that we would be handling code enforcement adequately. And from that point forward, I would think likely March or April next year. At the latest.
Thank you. Okay, next one. This is for Maria. And this is in regard to the Fourth Street revitalization notations that you made. Just curious, have the, when you talk about the seasonal watering schedule and the landscaping and that kind of thing, has that already been, has that amount already been accounted for in the cost of the project? Or is that, will that be in addition to?
So the utility authority, city of Albuquerque, Bernalillo County Utility Authority are going to be conducting the irrigation audit for us at no cost. So there's no cost associated there. The cost comes in, actually, what we're looking at on that is when we did our landscape irrigation walkthrough a little more than a week ago, we discovered quantities of bubblers and ground cover and plants that were not installed per plan that are just not there. And rather than having them go back out there, dig stuff up and insert additional irrigation appurtenances, we're just going to request a credit because those quantities have already been paid. So we're gonna be asking for, in the final change order, when there's an accounting for everything on the as-bills of everything that was put into the project, that'll all balance out and we do expect a credit. Does that answer your question?
It does. Was there numerous locations? A few?
Mayor, trustee Pacheco, they were pretty consistent in what was missing, so it was easy to identify. When we saw that, for example, a lot of the conifer trees were supposed to have four bubblers. They all had two, adequate enough to water them, but we paid for four, that type of thing. Missing plants, you'll see some flagging out there. You'll see markers that show things that were in the plant count, missing in the plant count when that walkthrough was done. So all of those add up to quantities in line items and equate to money to be returned to us.
And will there be some landscaping that is taken out completely? Or are we able to still water with what's there?
Mayor, trustee Pacheco, the system is at, the irrigation audit will tell us all of that. And I have to say that the one issue we have not had at all is, is the system itself. It's incredibly well-designed. It's designed for the dense landscape we have out there. What the irrigation audit will do, sure, that the settings that the settings are adequate for all of the different areas pertaining to the type of landscape that's there. Additionally, they'll train our staff on how to adjust and water based on drought, based on storm activity and for seasonal changes based on the type of landscape. It's pretty comprehensive.
That's great. And that audit will be done when?
Actually, Mayor, trustee Pacheco, it was scheduled for tomorrow. The utility authority has pulled all of their contractors out of the field during the health shutdown for COVID. So they will contact us. We slid in under the end of the contract by the end of the year, but they have assured us that this will happen within the month.
Great.
May I say one last thing?
Sure.
In addition to the irrigation audit and In addition to the irrigation audit and the walkthroughs that we've done and the final as built, which will give us a definitive quantity, there's still the warranty period, and you will see that there's some landscape out there that has to be replaced because it's died within the warranty period. It won't be replaced immediately. It'll be replaced at the appropriate season for replanting. So it'll be an ongoing thing probably for the next six months.
That's great. So anything that didn't survive will will be replaced?
That is correct.
Thank you. And you may have mentioned this before, Maria, but what is your best guess as to when the contract will be closed for the Fourth Street? And I know we've talked about it many a times, but is there, is there kind of an end date in place?
Mayor, trustee Pacheco, we're kind of at the mercy of New Mexico Department of Transportation at the moment. We are trying to get a response from the walkthrough, from the walkthrough. I think I explained this in the last meeting. There were a number of punch list items related to design standards that DOT requested justification and or solutions for. It took us a couple of months to do that. We submitted it a month ago and are waiting for their final either approval of the solutions we have proposed or exceptions to their design standards, which we have asked for. Until we know what DOT is going to do with those items, we we we're we're we have an open contract because those are outstanding punch list items. So at this point, yeah, you know, they and and not just COVID, everyone's working from home, but they've lost two staff members in the local government division. So we're all, Anne, the mayor, myself, we're all kind of knocking on the door saying, please, please give us a response because we are so anxious to close this out and push our money forward to the next phase.
Sure. Well, thanks for continuing to work on that. Hopefully we'll see an end to it at some point soon. Thanks, Maria. Fred, next ones are for you. Have we heard anything back from the traffic study on Fourth and Ortega? I know that that new business is about ready to open if she hasn't opened already, and I know that that's going to become probably even a more frequently used intersection. Have we heard anything?
Yes, we got trustee Pacheco, Mayor and Board of Trustees, we got the initial report back that the Council of Governments did for us. We're review, we're reviewing that and actually trying to, again, with the COVID and everything, set up a meeting internally to review it and and then get with the the engineers and also Burnley County, who's been willing to work with us on the north end of of the village to the to the county line. And so hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll have those meetings done and we'll be able to come up with some short term and then long term solutions for that.
Great. Thank you so much. And then one last one, just a curiosity question. You mentioned there were issues on Fourth Street with the car show. What were the issues?
There was a, there was a car show back in October that started in Albuquerque. Trustee check on Mayor and trustees, and they kind of splintered out and one of the groups ended up on Fourth Street there in Los Rancho's. And actually, they left some lot of trash and there was some issues that were going on there and actually used a local business without the business's permission. So we have met, I I've met with the business owner and also I'm I'm monitoring the the car club's Facebook pages, so if they try and schedule anything else, we'll be aware of it and also the the business owner is going to notify us if she sees anything or hears anything so that we can prevent it. We won't, don't want to discourage different things like that. We just want to make sure that they have the the proper permission and follow the appropriate guidelines, especially during COVID.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Mayor, that is all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Pacheco. Trustee Ricabini, your turn.
Thank you. Very thorough. Trustee Pacheco, thank you so much. I just on the on the Old Village Hall, I think it's a real good idea to get rid of those old buildings back there. That's going to be a bad deal here pretty quick. So if they need some storage, maybe we could, we could set some kind of a of a length of time before we get that off. And so I'm hoping that we can get some other buildings and get the, I don't, I still don't know what the the disposition of the hall is going to be itself. So I'm interested in hearing more about that as you as you proceed. But anyway, great job on all that and the Fergus, you and Sabrina are doing a bang up job over there, you and your staff, and I just really wanted to just say thank you for the way that you're handling things over there. There's a lot going on and just just to make mention to you that way and Ms. Justice, great job as usual and going on great. And so what a, what a great job you're doing there. Ms. Rinaldi, I wanted to, or Maria, I wanted to ask you about the the hundred forty two five hundred forty two thousand five hundred dollars to finish, estimated to finish. And then the credit, do you anticipate that the credit will be larger than the hundred forty two thousand or a credit of sorts against the hundred forty two thousand?
Mayor, trustee, it will be in excess of the balance of the contract.
I'm sorry, say again, please.
Can you hear me?
Now I can.
Hello? Of the, it will be in excess of the balance as listed there now. That does not take into consideration the final quantities, trustee.
Okay, so so then what I'm hearing is that that we don't, we don't expect a lot of additional cash out to finish.
Mayor, trustee Ricabini, the only outstanding thing now is any construction modifications that we may be that we we may be asked to make from NMDOT.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, trustee.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ricabini. Okay, we now are going to move to item eight, financial business. Item eight A is discussion and approval of the cash report, October twenty twenty. Treasurer Will Fisher, please present the cash report. Is Will Fisher on?
Standby.
Okay.
One more minute.
Sure.
I have a phone caller in and we're just verifying the phone number real quick.
Okay.
Mr. Lopez, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you well. Is this Will Fisher?
Yeah, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Please present the cash report.
Absolutely. Thank you. Before you all, you should have the cash report for October thirty first, twenty twenty. Any cash balance as of October thirty first, twenty twenty is five million, four hundred forty four thousand, five hundred thirty nine dollars and eighty four cents, which is an increase of two hundred fifty eight thousand, five hundred fifteen dollars and forty seven cents for this month. Year to date, excess of revenues over expenditures that two hundred and sixty six thousand, two hundred fifty nine and eight cents. No noted unusual or significant items, but I'll turn it over to Ms. Tammy as well.
Tammy, are you on?
Yes, Mayor, can you hear?
Yes, I can hear you just fine. Did you want to add anything to the cash report that was presented by Will Fisher?
Mayor and trustees, I do not have anything to add at this time, but I stand for any question.
Okay, wonderful. I do need a motion to approve the cash report. You're muted, trustee Pacheco.
Sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the cash report.
I need a second.
Trustee Rayel, second.
Okay, now it's time for discussion and questions of either of Tammy. She would be the best one, probably. Do, does the governing body have any specific questions about the cash report for for Tammy Silva? Okay. I'm going to call for the question. I'm going to call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Thank you. We now move to item nine, public hearings. Nine A. S twenty dash oh six, a request by Don Nieto Gui and Robert Gui for preliminary plat approval of a major subdivision for twelve point two one seven acres of property in the A one zone in the South Rio Grande character area. The property is located at seventy two hundred Rio Grande Boulevard Northwest and is legally known as tracks one thirty six A and one thirty six B. MRGCD map number twenty seven, situated in projected section twenty, township eleven north, range three east, New Mexico principal meridian. Village of Los Rancho's to Albuquerque, Burnley County, New Mexico. The property contains twelve point two acres more or less. For those of you who've been around for a while, that was the land and the home that John Robb and his lovely wife lived in. They have since passed a number of years ago, and so we have new owners there. I'm going to make an announcement now. Those speaking will be called upon and will be sworn in individually at their respective time. Ms. Winter, will you please swear in Ms. Justice? You're muted, Ms. Winter.
I didn't click it hard enough.
That's okay.
Tiffany, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Oh, sorry, I do.
Thank you.
Ms. Justice, please present the request.
Mayor trustees, so this proposed subdivision would create three lots zoned A one. One about ten acres and then two lots about one acre, but over one acre each. Each lot would be at least one acre net and would have an access easement and a adequate turnaround. Each lot is planned to have a single family residence, as is allowed by the zoning. Since this subdivision involves more than five acres and creates more than two lots, it's considered a major subdivision, so it's following a different process than our normal minor subdivision, which is administrative. The sketch plat review occurred in September and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted seven to zero at their October meeting to forward to the Board of Trustees a recommendation of approval for this item. The final plat would be approved at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And major subdivisions are required to go through the site development plan process, which is being done in the next agenda item. The surrounding properties are all zoned A one. And the roadway dimension does meet our requirements and the cul-de-sac also meets our requirements as well as the fire departments. During construction, applicants would be required to mitigate dust and potential stormwater pollution with the stormwater pollution prevention plan, as is required by the EPA. As for considerations for subdivision plating, the maintenance of the rural atmosphere, the village encourages maintenance of the rural atmosphere, which is accomplished in the subdivision through maintenance of the existing MRGCD irrigation and provisions to maintain the undeveloped land. The two hundred eighty foot setback from Rio Grande Boulevard also applies. As for services, the applicant has a letter stating water and sewer availability from the Water Utility Authority and the utility plan shows the placement of public utilities. As for preservation, the site's historic aspects are preserved with this plan. And this project does does conform to the master plan in the following sections, overall village goals, village form, open space, historic preservation and residential development. For the preliminary plat requirements, the applicant's in the process of obtaining a financial guarantee instrument, which will be provided with a subdivision improvements agreement. The information that's required is shown on the sheets of the plats. And with that, the department recommends the Board of Trustees approve of a preliminary plat of a major subdivision for twelve point two one seven acres of property in the A one zone in the South Rio Grande character area with the following conditions and findings. The conditions being an easement is added, clarifying the shared use and maintenance of the structures that span the property lines between two and three, lots two and three. This would be addressed and contingent upon the approval of the site development plan in the next item. For the next item, the site development plan, if this were not, if the next item were not approved, this condition would be moot. The final plat shall contain all the required language to be placed on the plat, i.e. data notes, vicinity map, public utility easement statements, restrictions, legends and certifications. And I have some notes for what specifically needs to be corrected on the plats. All utility systems shall be underground if the utility company permits. All the requirements of the Water Utility Authority shall be met in the installation of the utilities and governing rules and regulations adhered to. All development shall be carried out in accordance with applicable state laws and village ordinances. A subdivision improvements agreement will be required prior to the recording of the final plat to guarantee completion of the required improvements. And a financial guarantee instrument in the amount of one hundred and twenty five percent of the estimated infrastructure costs must be submitted prior to filing of the final plat with the findings that the subdivision meets the requirements of section nine point one point six C one through six, considerations for subdivision plating and section nine point one point eight, A two, A through F, preliminary plat requirements. And the public notice requirements have been met, and I stand for any questions.
Tiffany, we'll get to questions for you after we have the applicants and people in favor and also against speak. The applicant will now be given the opportunity to speak on the request. Is Don Nieto Gui and Robert Gui in attendance to this meeting?
Standby.
Good evening, trustees and mayor.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Marie Simons. I'm acting as agent this evening to Robert and Don Nieto Goy.
Okay, you have three minutes to make a presentation on behalf of them.
Gotcha. Do I need to be sworn in before I speak?
You do. Ms. Winter, please swear in this lady.
Ms. Simons, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, I would like to speak to the history of this project and what brought it all together. This family has very deep roots here. Don Nieto Goy grew up in the valley and is very connected to this place. Her family has been recognized through their lineage as one of the Las Primeras Familias de Nuevo Mexico, being one of the original families of New Mexico. And her father, Joe Penya, ran at Chevron Station that was once located at Rio Grande in the corner where the Montano Bridge currently is. This family is a local family and not an import. Historic preservation is a critical piece of this project and our clients have gone to great lengths to support a design which incorporates the heritage of the land itself. Don Schlegel, who was the original architect on the main house where the Robbs lived, was Antoine Pridock's mentor. When our clients purchased the property, they contacted us wanting to preserve the integrity of the residence and the land it sits on. They are dedicated to the agricultural history of Los Rancho's. They have utilized the west portion, west portion of their property for farming melons and pumpkins. They are partnered with a local winery to grow grapes for wine, which is exclusively from New Mexico grown grapes. This is a minimum five year This is a minimum five-year commitment. In addition to their agricultural and historic preservation efforts, the true core of this project is that they hope to create a family compound which fosters and enriches their family. Integral to this subdivision and site development plan are two new lots for their children's houses. Um, Antoine has designed these two houses as being a central gathering place for the family. As you can see in the site plan, we have designed a curved wall, which is crowned at its apex and then tapers into the land at each end. This wall is a sculptural element which ties the project together. It is the structural wall for both children's houses and embraces the pasture land symbolically acting as a catcher's mitt for the family. Grandparents, children, and grandchildren hope to all gather in the shared space and be able to cook and eat and play together. We have been thoughtful of its placement, weaving it into the central space between the children's houses where it will have the biggest impact on the family itself and minimal impact to neighbors and view corridors. During this time of COVID, as we all find ourselves coming together and spending more time with our immediate families, it has been a delight to be the architect on this project and design a space where family can celebrate their togetherness. As you know, this virus feeds on the best part of us, the part that wants to connect, support, and love each other. This project is designed to support a family in the midst of this uncertain and complex time.
Thank you, Ms. Simons. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this matter? If so, and if you're on this call, please raise your hand.
I have nobody.
Okay. Is there anyone participating on this call who is opposed that would like to speak? I think we might have one person.
Nobody's indicating they would like to speak.
Okay. I'm gonna ask this question because I have to. Is there anyone else participating who is opposed that would like to re- would like to speak? If so, please raise your hand.
There is nobody on indicating they would like to speak.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, are there any questions or comments from the Board of Trustees? Who wants to start?
I just have a comment, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, first of all, I, I have to say I'm a, a little envious of this beautiful project, um, in that it's not only beautiful, but it's also, um, you know, i- i- it's incorporating everything that we as the village have wanted in a project like this. Um, incorporating everything that we talked about in the master plan about not only preserving our, our heritage here in the, in the village, but also real key to this, I think, is the family. Um, and bringing the family together and bringing the children, uh, onto this property, um, with the parents, which I think is just awesome. And I commend, um, you all for putting together such a beautiful project, uh, in, in bringing everybody together and, and really, um, just adhering to everything that we have been promoting as far as tradition and heritage and, and all of that, and family. So I just wanted to make that comment, that it's a beautiful, beautiful development.
Thank you, Trustee Pacheco. Any other questions or comments from the other members of the governing body? Okay, there being none, the floor is now closed for comments. I need a motion to approve.
I will make a motion to approve.
I need a second. Is there any further discussion at this time? Being none, I'm gonna call for the question. I'm gonna call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel. Hope we didn't lose him. I'll get to him at the end. Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Okay, Trustee Rayel called me, uh, about twenty minutes ago and said he was fading in and out. Ms. Winter, where does that leave us? We have two-
There, it's back again. All right.
Uh, Trustee Rayel, are you back? Ms. Winter, uh, tell us where that leaves us. You do have two of the three voting for it.
You had a quorum at the beginning, Mayor, so you are still good to go. And, uh, let's keep trying to keep, um, Trustee Rayel connected here.
Okay, he's having problems. Uh, why don't I give us, why don't we take like a three-minute break to see if we can get Trustee Rayel back on? Okay?
Okay.
We'll be back at seven fifty, fifty-three, seven fifty-three. Check your watches. Move the subdivision.
That's for nine A?
Yes.
Okay, I say yes.
Okay, that takes care of that. Did, are you gonna try to call in?
No, I'm still, I, right now I have you on. If I lose it again, I'll call in.
Okay, that's fine. Let's, let's move to nine B then.
Mayor.
Yes.
This is Danielle. Can you go ahead and reconvene the meeting and then go through, um, the vote again, please?
Sure. Uh, it is seven fifty-three. Uh, I am reconvening our meeting of November the eighteenth, our Board of Trustees' regular meeting. And I am going to ask for another motion to approve the request, nine A.
I will make the motion to approve the preliminary plat, um, for this hearing.
I need a second.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Being none, I'm gonna call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel again.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
We're good. Okay, now we move to item nine B, SDP twenty dash oh five. A request by Don Nieto Gooey and Robert Gooey for final site development plan approval of a residential site development plan for a development in the A-one zone in the South Rio Grande character area. The property is located at seventy-two-hundred Rio Grande Boulevard Northwest, and is legally known as tracks one thirty-six A and one thirty-six B, MRGCD map number twenty-seven, situated in pro- projected section twenty, township eleven north, range three east, New Mexico principal meridian. Village of Los Rancho's to Albuquerque, Bernalillo County, New Mexico. The property contains twelve point two acres more or less. Individuals who were not already sworn in and wish to speak will be called upon and will be sworn in individually at their respective time. Ms. Justice, please present the request. You've already been sworn in. Is that okay, Ms. Winter? Go ahead.
Mayor, trustees, um, so, since, uh, the prior item was a subdivision that involves more than five acres and creates more than two lots, it's considered a major subdivision and requires a site development plan, hence this item. So for the analysis, as we, uh, or as the applicant mentioned for the last item, um, this is a bit of a unique case. Uh, so typically, compliance with the floor area ratio height regulations and, uh, wall regulations would be confirmed during, during issuance of building and fence permits. However, there are several design elements that the applicant requests approval on as part of the site development plan due to the uniqueness of the project, as it's styled as a family compound. Uh, the unique circumstances of the family compound, uh, wouldn't normally be considered hardships for a variance, yet are aligned with the village's values. Um, for that reason, they're noted in the site development plan, and approval of the plan would include these exceptions. The exceptions involve the new property line between, uh, lot two and three. The outdoor courtyard with an overhead trellis and kitchen area that straddles the property line is a communal, uh, space intended for both families. Uh, there's a wall design that the applicant mentioned for the previous item that exceeds the village's wall height limitations. Uh, so this is contrary to the village's rules on side setbacks, as wall height is limited to six feet within the setback. The structures are also prohibited in the setbacks. While it's not a building, the dimensions of the outdoor dining area and trellis meet our definition of a structure. Uh, the intent of the structures and wall height limitations are so that neighbors, uh, don't impact one another with structures or blocked views, as well as to provide open space between structures. Uh, the typical application of the side setback is for separate neighbors with separate spaces, not a communal space. Um, so open space is provided throughout both properties, and the curved wall design is intended to highlight an area of open spaces, a focal point. Uh, so this exception is in the interior of the properties, uh, as the applicant mentioned, and does not impose on surrounding properties or even lot one of this subdivision. Um, workarounds such as moving the property lines elsewhere or removing, uh, them entirely would still result in violation of the village ordinances with this design. If it were moved, a structure would still be in the setback area, and the wall height could still be an issue. Uh, if the property line were removed, then the property would no longer be single-family residential per the village's definition, even if they are a family. The remaining regulations, the floor area ratio, building height, other fences and walls, will be addressed during the permit process and appear to be compliant. Uh, the proposed uses of agriculture and single-family residences are permissive in the A-one zone. Uh, as for the site development plan requirements, uh, the requirements for the site plan are included. The proposed uses, elevations, and height from final grade are included. Exterior materials and colors are not required for residential development, uh, since it's not subject to our section on design regulations. The grading and drainage plan, uh, was done by a licensed professional engineer and was corrected per the village designated engineer's review. Uh, roadway standards, um, access to the three lots will be from an asphalt-paved private access ease to Rio Grande Boulevard, and if traffic impact studies not required. And, uh, for parking, one parking space is required for each bedroom or fraction thereof in each dwelling. Uh, with the garages, carports, and additional parking identified on each lot, the site meets this requirement. As the structures are residential, no ADA parking is required. Floating and docking areas are not required for residential properties. Uh, and our requirements for sections on the paved and, uh, gravel private ways are also shown. For trash receptacles, they are required to be accessible by waste management, and they appear to be accessible along Rio Grande Boulevard with residential rollout bins. Uh, for landscaping, there's not a minimum area that must be landscaped, uh, since this site is zoned, this site is zoned residential. Uh, but the landscape plan shows a variety of trees, shrubs, grasses, and flowers throughout all three lots. And the existing landscaping around the house, uh, the existing house will be maintained. For utilities, uh, as mentioned before, the applicant has a letter from the water and sewer, uh, confirming water and sewer availability, and has confirmed the fire department requirements for a turnaround and fire hydrant. For lighting, the outdoor lighting is noted as path and accent lighting, and all lights must be shielded, and proposed future exterior lighting for the site must be compliant with our dark skies ordinance. For signage, no signage is proposed, but any signs must be compliant with our sign ordinance. Uh, and so with that, the department recommends the Board of Trustees approve of a final site development plan of a residential site development plan for the development in the A-one zone in the South Rio Grande character area with the following conditions and findings. Uh, the condition that any future signage must comply with assigned ordinance, and sign permits must be obtained. Any future exterior lighting must comply with the dark skies ordinance. The final site development plan must meet Bernalillo County Fire Department requirements. Construction shall meet all current village, county, and state codes. The final site development plan must be executed by the applicant. Uh, with the findings that this is in conformance with our master plan, the overall village goals, village form, open space, historic preservation, and residential development sections. The proposed development meets the requirements of, uh, the A-one zone, and public notice requirements have been met. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. The applicant or their representative will now be given the opportunity to speak on the request. Uh, is the representative of the owner still available? And you've already been sworn in, so you have three minutes. Or less.
Okay, I have nothing further to add, but I'm available to answer any question.
Thank you very, very much. Uh, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this matter? If so, please raise your hand.
No hands raised.
Is there anyone participating who is opposed that would like to speak?
Again, no hands raised.
Okay, I have to ask this final question. Is there anyone else participating who is opposed that would like to speak? If so, please raise your hand.
No hands raised.
Thank you. At this time, uh, are there any questions or comments from the Board of Trustees?
I have one que-
Go ahead, uh, Trustee Rayel.
Uh, my question is for, for, uh, Ms. Justice. Uh, Tiffany, are the, the concerns that, uh, our engineer had, have they all been addressed to your satisfaction? And have they are addressed with, did the engineer go over them and, and accept the new changes or whatever they did?
Uh, so, the engine, or sorry, uh, Trustee Rayel, Mayor Trustees, the engineer did receive, uh, the revised plans, um, and they were forwarded to, uh, their engineer, uh, for the most part, so substantially, uh, the changes have been made. Um, and, uh, the final corrected, uh, grading and drainage plan will be required before any building permits are issued. We just had a bit of a crunch time for the timeline, uh, getting the plans and the review back and forth.
Okay, so if they're not corrected, we would, we would see it at that time? When they ask for a permit or what?
Yes, uh, they, they will be correcting the plans, uh, before any building permits would be issued. And ideally, pretty soon anyways.
And Bo Hunter Houston would re- review them again, or what?
Uh, yes, they would review it, uh, until they have no further, uh, corrections for the, for the plan, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, any other questions from the other Board of Trustees? Okay, the floor is now closed for comments. I need a motion to approve nine B.
I would approve.
Okay, who, who approve?
Trustee Rayel.
Who seconded? I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any further discussion at this time? Being none, I'll call for the question. I'll call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Thank you. Item ten, old business, there is none. Item eleven, announcements, there are none. Uh, we now move to item twelve, new business, twelve A. Discussion and approval to advertise the adoption of ordinance number two-seventy-two, and ordinance amending general regulations for Fourth Street development to allow for developer installation of improvements and providing the option to waive the dedication requirement for properties within, with improved Fourth Street streetscape. Uh, Planning and Zoning Director of Justice, it's your turn to speak.
Uh, Mayor, trustees, uh, so this ordinance revision, um, is for our requirement, uh, that for any development or redevelopment along Fourth Street, we require dedication of seven feet of right-of-way for future village improvements, i.e. the Fourth Street project. Um, however, this ordinance was written before we started on the Fourth Street project, and now that we have, uh, phase one, uh, complete and are moving forward to phase two, as well as portions of Fourth Street south of the project area that already have streetscape improvements, we want to, um, wait, be, uh, provide the option to waive that requirement, uh, for properties that already have the streetscape improvements, um, as well as, uh, provide the option for developers to install improvements in, uh, the future dedicated right-of-way and dedicate both the improvements and the right-of-way to the village. Um, right now, our ordinance requires that they dedicate the right-of-way, and the village will install the improvements. Um, but if the developer is inclined to do so, uh, this would allow them to also install, uh, improvements like sidewalk, uh, and landscaping, uh, per our specifications. And I stand for any questions.
Okay, let me ask, uh, Attorney Nan Winter, have you looked at this ordinance, Nan?
Mayor, yes, I saw it in the packet, uh, on Friday. I hadn't seen it before then, but it seems to be just fine.
Thank you. Uh, I, I'm gonna go with a motion in a second, and then we'll open it for discussion. I need a motion to approve.
I'm moving-
Okay, Trustee Rayel, who seconded?
Second.
Trustee Pacheco. Now, is there any questions from the governing body, any further discussion on this? Being none, I'm gonna call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Okay, item thirteen, trustee informal discussion. Roundtable discussion is informal. Board of Trustees will take no official vote or other official action. Trustee Rayel, do you have any informal discussion?
Yes, I have a couple of things. First one is, uh, um, for, uh, Ms. Winter, uh, at the last meeting, you had indicated you would check the previous- At the last meeting, you had indicated you would check the previous attorney's files to see if, in fact, we cannot enforce a sign ordinance for political signs. Were you able to get that done?
Mr. Mayor, Trustee Rael, I did search Mr. Chapel's records, and I did find no opinions regarding the sign ordinance. I did, however, have a conversation with Tiffany. We both looked at the sign ordinance together and decided that it likely needs and some updating. That it is very tightly written. Probably some difficulty in enforcing it as written. But I did not find a chapel opinion on that. I know Tiffany and I have it on our agenda to, to take a look at this in the future and bring it back to you.
That's good. Appreciate that. I have one other thing. On the, on Fourth Street with the new newly done Fourth Street from sheltered to a pueblo. Rather, pueblo solano. There's yield, there's no yield to pedestrian signs anywhere that I saw. The only thing that's there is, is signs that, that indicate where to stop when you come upon a crosswalk, and those signs are very small, so they're hard to see or read. So I believe that we should add some, some signs that would indicate yield to pedestrian so that people realize they have to stop or they should stop. Right now, I've seen where people keep going, even though people are wanting to cross the street. I don't know if you've noticed how small those signs are at, at the, at the crosswalks.
So, Trustee Rael, why don't, why don't you allow me and Ms. Rinaldi to, to give you a proper answer to this question? Because I, I think it'll take a little bit of discussion. This, this question has popped up before, to my recollection, so give us a little bit of time to deal with it, okay?
Okay, that's.
May, may I?
Of course.
Mayor, trustee, we actually are in the process. One of the reasons we want to close the project out, an additional reason besides phase two, is we would like to use some of the Fourth Street improvement money to add hawk signal signs, the very large pedestrian crossing signs that have the flashing lights, as well as some additional signage within the project area to indicate pedestrians. But yes, those were that size of the sign, that's the minimum acceptable for those types of signs, and they are much too small. We actually, we tried to do this as a change order, but the subcontractor, M W I, is not interested in coming back on the project. So once we close this out, we will have money freed up to be able to purchase and install those on our own.
Very good.
Very good.
Anything else, Trustee Rael?
That's all I have, thanks.
Okay, Trustee Pacheco.
I do have a few comments. First of all, I want to commend the staff for working diligently on the CARES Act applications. I understand that we received a number of applications. I think it exceeded kind of what we were looking to receive, so I think that's terrific. I, I think the second round of contacting businesses was really important, just to share, you know, every, the staffs and the communities need for them to, to place these applications, whether or not they, you know, would be awarded or not. But I think it was, it was a, a great effort by the staff, and I want to commend you for that. I'd also like to commend the Friends of Los Ranchos and say thank you to them for sharing some of their funding with with the Village of Los Ranchos. I think they, they provided us with some needed funds to, to do particular things, especially within the ag area, and hope that they'll keep applying for funding and continue to consider us and kind of our efforts moving forward. So just wanted to say thank you for that. Also wanted to mention some pilot projects that may be coming before us with regard to housing development. I hope that we can all keep an open mind about what we're gonna see and, and potentially hear about in the future. I think these are also important to our community. So I just wanted to, to, to say that with regard to the pilot projects for the housing development. And I also wanted to commend Jennifer for her efforts on the village vision. I, I think she put together and staff put together a really nice village vision, and I wanted to say thank you with regard to that. And then, lastly, I think this is just an appropriate time to say thank you to everybody. You know, I'm thankful for all of you. I thank the community for allowing me to represent them and wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Trustee Pacheco. Trustee Ricabini.
Thank you, Mayor. First, all the way back to the start, I want to thank Laura, Laura Lee McDowell for just mentioning, let's, let's make sure that we keep Los Ranchos in the forefront. I think that's a, that was a good, a good point that she made there. And then I'm gonna skip, I'm gonna go right to the, to the cash report that we just kind of blew through, okay?
Sure.
Really, an amazing thing that we have turned this thing completely around.
Yes.
Everybody has done a great job. They're clean, Tammy, great job. And all the staff and, and your, your folks and Mayor, you're doing a great job. We are in great shape. The whole meeting, we're talking about all good things we're gonna do. We're not trying to figure out how to get it done. We're gonna do them, and this is, this is just a credit to this village and the people in it and the staff and so I just want to mention that we're in such good shape. And we could been talking a whole lot differently. So we got, we got a new COVID storm on us right now.
Right.
Good, solid shape. Let's keep the belts tightened. We're gonna come out of this on the other end so good. So
You bet.
Great job, everybody, and thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you. Is that it, Trustee Ricabini?
That's it.
Okay, I have one final thing to tell the governing body and everybody else. Something dramatic happened today. I came to Village Hall at six fifteen this morning. There were thirty-seven checks, each one for ten thousand dollars that I signed right away. And I put all of those checks in the administrator's inbox. This afternoon, I understand we started distributing ten thousand dollar checks to businesses from the CARES Act. Perhaps fifteen, maybe even a little bit more than that. But you couldn't believe how happy I was this morning to find those checks ready to be signed. And I can tell you from what I'm hearing from, from different people, the businesses were very anxious to get their money. And that tells us all that there's people hurting out there. And so that is a wonderful thing. With that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. I need a second.
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 Thank you. It is eight fifteen. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.